Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 Census. But what is the Census? Simply put, the Census is a headcount of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the Census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is, and always has been, a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 Census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals and healthcare clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the Census online, by phone, or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all Census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agencies. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 Census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the future of our country.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020.
The El Paso County Law Library would like to invite you to your wedding at the Window on Friday, February 14th, 2020. Say I do at the Law Library. Group weddings performed 11 a.m. and 2 p.m. The fee is $50. The Law Library will provide the officiant, professional photographer, a 4x6 frame, a delicious wedding cupcake for the bride and groom, and the wedding march to begin the ceremony. Couples must meet the state-of-Texas marriage requirements as stated in the county clerk's website. Contact the Law Library to indicate your interest at eplawlibrary@epcounty.com, or dial (915) 546-2245.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The locations of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge-Fabians Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge-Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge-Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online, or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions, or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Lord, would you guide each member of this court, all department leaders and staff, as they carry out the responsibilities of county business? Your word says, "He has shown you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you, but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God? Let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. We count each new day as a gift from your hand, and we rejoice in your goodness and mercy. As we commit our hearts and our ways to you, we can rejoice with the psalmist David who declared, 'Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever, in the identity of my dear Savior,' I pray. Amen, and so be it."
Thank you, Mrs. Ferone. You're always welcome here. And welcome to Commissioners' Court. Thank you for being here. Jessica?
Thank you, Judge. Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4R. Are there any items that the members of the court or public would like to pull for further discussion?
Commissioners?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, public comment. We do have one member signed up to speak today, Mr. Pierre Andre Uzarraga.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pierre Andre Uzarraga, and I am the founder and chairman of the American Political Party Committee. I'm also the 2020 presidential candidate of the American Political Party Committee. And I can become the 46th president and the 2020 presidential elect of the American Political Party Committee in a number of ways. I can do it with the voters, which, quite honestly, that market is composed of Democrats and Republicans. Or I can use the legal system and subpoena the chairmans of these parties to a courtroom just like this one, in front of the people, and discuss the constitutionalizing, the Americanization of the parties. That forms a one political party government system at the federal level, at the state level, at the county level, at the city level, town levels, communities, neighborhoods, We all won. We're all American. So now the party has a responsibility, the government has a responsibility, to tackle issues that address children, like my 14-year-old daughter. Unconstitutionalized separation, victimization. You know, here in Texas, my family is made up of sheriffs and police officers, and that's God's honest truth. I've done time, you know, I've been around gang members, the neighborhood. El Paso is all neighborhood. It's 90% neighborhood and 10% you know, business development areas. So the majority of this community is neighborhoods. And so now we can tackle issues that address the people within these neighborhoods. You all have neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods. Donald Trump has a neighborhood. Nancy Pelosi, she has a neighborhood. But why should the kids in the neighborhoods and the ghettos behave when the big dogs are misbehaving? Oh, God! And if it is, it's just a false rhetoric. If you believed in God, your actions would show everyone that you do believe in God. My actions show, that's why outside these five minutes, I really don't say much. But here in these five minutes, I'm all talk. But outside, and even in here, I'm all walk. I have a duty and a responsibility now to tackle the nation, the voters, the media, because the media ain't doing their jobs. You have, I turn on the TV and I see Republican television, Democratic television, and you know, we got social studies in high schools. We're just breeding stupidity. We need a younger generation to come into the government. We need more businessmen, more businesswomen in government, more community leaders in government. And we need less government and business. We've been using certain acts for a long time. The county administration is unconstitutionally victimizing me right now, my daughter. They don't know anything. Your degrees don't mean squat. They don't. And that's the truth. I'm not stupid. I'm not a fool. I'm single, but I'm sharp. I'm outnumbered, but I'm not outsmarted. I'm never outsmarted, ever. I've been around the block once or twice. Fortunately or unfortunately, it depends on how you look at it, is the glass half-full or half-empty? You all here, the Democrats and Republicans, who are gonna continue to victimize voters who don't know any better? I know better. You guys look at things half, half-empty. I look at things half-full. Donald Trump, you gotta get your stuff together. I said up here, I liked you and I respected you, then it got to a point where, man, I wasn't liking you, but I still respected the man. I respect people. But now it's to the point where I'm like, man, I can't even respect the man. And I know there's gonna be a day where I come and I sit him down, and he's gonna have to work extremely hard to earn my respect. You and your media friends on both sides, three sides, four sides, gotta get your stuff together. Because I have a responsibility now to my daughter, to my family, to the members of the community, to the government. I'm not here to make friends, I'm just here to do what I gotta do. Take care of the things I said I'm gonna do. Walk the walk.
Time.
Thank you for your time. Good day. God bless America. I am 46 Free Riley.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Judge, at this time, we'd like to go ahead and pull items 21 and 22. and pull items 21 and 22. Item 21, from grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize the District Attorney's Office to submit the grant application for the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the El Paso County's Victim Assistance Program for FY '21 in the amount of $331,545, with a county match of $87,702, and an in-kind match for volunteer services totaling $400 for the period of September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2021. If awarded, the county match will be appropriated in the FY '21 budget, contract number 2020-0128. I'll also go ahead and read in item 22.
22, please.
Approve and authorize the District Attorney's Office to apply for the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division grant for the El Paso County's Domestic Violence Unit for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $145,932, with a county match of $141,932 for the period of September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2021. If awarded, the county match will be appropriated in the FY '21 budget, contract number 2020-0127.
Good morning. I'm Jaime S. Barca, your District Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a standard request, just so that we can make our application. Eventually, we have to still go through the COG process. Neither of these applications is new. We've had the Victims' Grant for some time and also the Domestic Violence Grant. I'd be happy to answer any questions. This gets us going. We aren't asking for anything new, except we always add in additional 5% in anticipation of you all maybe giving the rest of the employees, not the grant employees, a step increase or a cost of living increase.
Want to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Barca. Thank you.
And thank you for taking me out of order. I have something at 11:00, so I thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to the regular order, item number six, Presentation. Item 6A, receive a presentation from various census stakeholders regarding an update of the census efforts and how the county's investment has been utilized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joel Bishop with County Administration. I'm pleased this morning to provide you with an update on the census with many of our community stakeholders. We wanted to give you an update on how your investment has been utilized and how the census efforts are going since the efforts are heating up and the time is getting short. So we have with us, many of the action team members are here this morning. And I asked Nicole Farina to do an update that she did for Congresswoman Escobar a few weeks ago to community stakeholders. So I'm going to ask Nicole Farina from the city to give you a presentation update that'll kind of give you a feel of where we're at and what's at stake. And then we will hear from other members of the action team. I would call this, from what I've seen so far, Commissioners and County Judge, this is nothing short of a true epic collaboration effort in the community, not just with the city and county, but with dozens of community stakeholders are coming together. And it's really positive collaboration. So we're hoping this morning to give you an update, and we will be back in the near future to give you a more specific update regarding how your investment has been utilized. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Nicole Farina, and after that, we'll hear from our Census Representative, Paulina Lopez.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nicole Farina, Chief Resilience Officer, City of El Paso. I'm pleased to again be here in front of you all. I always enjoy it when I get to hop across the street and come speak to you all. But I'm especially pleased today to be speaking about such a momentous effort regarding something that is so incredibly important for our community. We all know how, what it means to be counted. We all know what the census means to us in terms of financial resources for our community, representation for our people, and frankly, just having a voice at the state and national levels. You all will recall that two years ago, both this body and the City Council approved identical resolutions forming the Basile de Norte Complete Count Committee with the intention of bringing together an unprecedented group of stakeholders to press forward the effort, not just for the city of El Paso, but for the entire region, making sure that we count. We knew that there was a number of barriers in front of us, and we have spent the last two years building awareness, building coalition, building funds, and really getting ready for what is now a call to action. You will have probably seen this. If you have not seen this tagline and branding before, then we need to do a better job. But we came together as the Basile de Norte Complete Count Committee and understood that we needed to send a message that we needed to count. We have to count, but we can only do that together, and together, we can be fearless. We know, again, that there's a number of barriers that face our community in terms of being counted. I've already mentioned the fear. Something else that we've heard over the last two years is really this sense of apathy, this sense of that their voice does not matter. It doesn't matter if I participate in the census or not. I'm not afraid, but I, you know, it doesn't matter. It doesn't make a difference. We have, again, spent a lot of time and a lot of effort making sure that folks understand specifically how it does matter. There's a lack of knowledge in terms of what the actual significance of the census is and how it does affect people on an individual basis. But at the end of the day, we're trying to make sure that everyone is counted. Our goal is to have a 95% complete count. In 2010, it's my understanding that we were at about 75%. And Paulina, you correct me if I'm wrong on that. But, so we're looking to really ramp up our efforts and make sure that our community is completely counted, completely and accurately counted. So what's at stake? A portion of $675 billion in federal funds that support resources, programs, and services. I mean, from my perspective at the city in community and human development, we manage the federal entitlement. 95% of what we do in my department and what we deploy in this community is directly tied to the census. The Community Development Block Grant is a formula grant, meaning how many people do you have in this that count for this, and that determines our funds. Obviously, three congressional seats for the state of Texas, and we want to make sure that we secure minority representation. Even just a 1% undercount could cost Texans $300 million a year in federal funding. And we all know what that means in terms of impact for our community. If you don't fill out the census, if our community does not participate, it means a tremendous impact on schools, home improvement, affordable housing development. That's been a big topic over at the city the last couple of weeks, looking at how we're facing an affordable housing gap in our community that is going to grow over the next five years. If we're not properly counted, we're going to be facing a similar type of housing crisis that we see in other large cities across Texas. Access to medicine, access to food. We recently had a major event on Martin Luther King Day of Service out at the Food Bank, El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. Susan Gudell, their CEO, spoke very eloquently on that day to the public and to the media about what impacts the census has on her ability to distribute food to those in need. And it obviously has an impact in terms of federal funding on construction projects across this region. So again, we wanted to emphasize to our community that this is about coming together and being counted. And so the media campaign that is being launched, I believe we are within a week of having our video media prepared to hit the airwaves. Also, radio ads. We've got a robust social media presence. But the campaign really articulates what happens if we are counted, what happens with you, each and every El Pasoan, and what happens without you. So you can see, we are better together. We are unafraid together, is the message. Here's some additional examples. You can start to see, as we talk about medicine and schools and facilities and construction and food, the campaign really follows through on that, illustrating for folks, this is what we can have if we are counted, but this is where we end up if we're not. I mentioned the social media presence. We are all over the place. I joke about this one a little bit. I've got the Instagram. I've got the Facebook. I've got the Twitter. The Snapchat has escaped me. I apparently have crossed that age threshold where I no longer can adapt to new social. So, but our team is not. Our team is very adaptable, and they are out there across the board with these social media tags. We hope that you will follow us. We hope that you will encourage your constituents to follow us and get consistent updates and information regarding our census work. How can you and others really help? Well, we can encourage folks to join the Basile de Norte Complete Count Committee. One of the things that's been so amazing about our community over the last several months, year almost, is that we have seen so many new complete count committees pop up in individual market sectors, individual neighborhoods and communities. UTEP has done a tremendous job at catalyzing the efforts and the energies of students. And so what we're asking is that those complete count committee members, those community leaders, join us, join the Basile de Norte Complete Count Committee. Our resources were allocated by the Commissioners Court and by the City Council, not just to benefit a small group of people, but to benefit everyone who is working towards this effort. And so we are looking to ask folks to join and share, to be one voice, one message in our community. The worst thing that I think we can do is show inconsistency. The worst thing that we can do is cause confusion. What we really need to do is, again, make sure that people are confident and fearless in terms of filling out the census and understanding of the importance of it. We can encourage folks to volunteer for events and recruit volunteers. I believe there's going to be some discussion about that today. We're very excited about that. We're very excited about our partnership with the United Way. The City of El Paso has been working with the United Way and has activated their volunteer portal as a way for anyone who is interested to sign up for specific events or sign up for specific types of tasks. And so we are working, particularly in this time now that we're, you know, it's a call to action, and we're really doing more and more. You're going to start to see more and more events. We're really asking folks to engage with that portal. But we're really thankful to our partners at the United Way for really being able to give us the foundation for that, or else I think we would be trying to sign people up, you know, manually, and that was never going to work. We're asking folks to provide a list of events and promote census participation. One of the things that we're doing with the City Council is attending a lot of their community meetings. You all are engaging very regularly with your constituencies. If there is an opportunity for us to join you and speak to the folks you're speaking to, we're happy to do that. We also have, in terms of the package we've put together with the Complete Count Committee, a set of talking points, a couple of one-pagers, some handouts, some flyers, things that we can give to you so that you can then also be a representative of the effort. We want you to link to social media, share and post. It's always very effective when we see our community leadership retweeting and sharing on Facebook. And again, I don't know what the Snapchat version of that is, but whatever that is, please do that. But we do have a social media kit that we can provide. And so we're not asking folks to just go out on a limb and make things up. We're absolutely willing to support you in doing that. Give us contacts for media interviews. Oftentimes, the media will contact the county. They'll contact the city. They'll contact our partners. We're looking to really funnel that into the Complete Count Committee. A few of our chairs are here today. I guess let me take a quick moment and recognize them. David Arera from Region 19 has been one of our chairs since the very beginning. Thank you, David. We are welcoming Annette Gutierrez, Executive Director from the Council of Governments. Thank you, Annette. We're really hoping, and not hoping, we know that by engaging in that, we're really going to be a lot more effective in terms of engaging the entire region. And then we also welcomed your own David Stout as a new chair to the committee. And not present this morning is Liz O'Hara from Texas Gas. She is in the building. She's actually at jury duty. So Liz, if you can hear me, we're very pleased to have Liz and her media background helping with this. But to that point, what we're trying to do is really push a lot of the media interviews towards the chairs. They've been well-trained and well-prepared to offer commentary to the media and engage with the public. I've already mentioned inviting others to join the CCC. And again, at the end of the day, there are job opportunities that are available through the Bureau. That's something that Paulina has talked about, and I'm sure she'll mention. But we want to make sure that we are promoting those job opportunities for our community. I think that's the end of my presentation. But I do just want to share a couple of recent accomplishments that we have here. We ask our consulting team that we brought on board, partially with the support of the county and the city jointly, they produce a monthly report that lets us know how our dollars are being spent and what we have achieved. I am excited to announce that we have received a $25,000 donation from the Hunt Foundation, and that's really going to go a long way in terms of our call to action. There's a number of other fundraising efforts in place, and I hope to be able to report back to this body soon that more money has been raised. I already mentioned the Martin Luther King Day of Service event that we had in January. Over 150 volunteers participated. It was really an inspiring piece. David, you were there. It was really, thank you so much for supporting us on that. We have had some major media coverage over the last couple of months, but more so in January. We have coordinated and delivered 50,000 flyers for the census. We have hosted, we host monthly Complete Count Committee meetings and make sure that we're constantly reaching out and trying to grow those meetings. We actually had to move the meeting. It used to be at the Basile de Norte Foundation. Had to move it because the room wasn't big enough. We've had a number of town hall meetings, a couple in partnership with the Congresswoman. Let's see. One other thing that I wanted to make sure to mention to you all in terms of our social media outreach, because I really feel like it's been robust, and I'm not going to find it in time here. Yeah, I apologize. I don't seem to have it here. But I am very excited about the number of followers that we've engaged. And again, you know, we know the power of social media. We know the power of the digital network, and we're looking to really expand that, given the limited resources we have. Other states have really supported their local census efforts. Ours has not been as robust in their support, and so this is largely a grassroots effort. And so we thank you for your support. We thank you for your engagement and engaging your constituents. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Paulina.
Thank you, Nicole.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Paulina Lopez, Senior Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. And I also want to thank you for your continued investment and support of the 2020 census. Ever since I've been on board since June 2018, you were one of the first partners we approached. And as the census nears, we're a little over a month away. We thank you for all that you do, and it's been an honor to work, not only with your respective offices, but also with your leadership and with the county administration. Something that we're also doing, and that's why we're here today, is we're activating mobile questionnaire assistance starting next month. And we will be able to see with one of the many tools that the Census Bureau has available, not only for you all, but the public in general, we will have a mapping tool where we will be able to see live. It'll be updated daily, starting March 20. We will be able to see where the community is responding and where the response is lagging. So with the help of your offices, we will be able to deploy additional resources and mobile questionnaire assistance mobile questionnaire assistance in county facilities and places where people typically congregate so that we're able to reach those very hard-to-count communities and individuals who have low internet connectivity so that they can get assistance to respond to the census questionnaire. We are collaborating with the Complete Count Committee to let the community know that the census is not only important, but it's safe and it has the ability to shape the communities and the county's future for the next 10 years. So the best thing we can do right now is deploy the message as one voice, one community that the census is important, it's safe and to show the questionnaire. Starting early March, communities will receive an invitation to respond in the mail. Rural parts of our county will also receive, in the first, in the very first mailing, they will receive a paper questionnaire. So with your help, we will be able to let our communities know that they can respond to the census online, over the phone, speaking to a live person, or by paper before a census worker comes out and knocks on their door. So as we, as we near this call to action, we thank you for your continued support and we look forward to working with you to communicate the importance of the census, invite people to participate and open their doors as necessary. So thank you for all that you do and we're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Stout, do you want to?
First of all, thank you, thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, Nicole, for getting up here and doing that. I just want to, to point out that, you know, the money that we, that we set aside in our budget this year and our budget last year, it's, it's not, it's not a lot. It's about $370,000 that we set aside, the city said, the city put aside $370,000 and we're trying to raise another 250 and we're hoping to be able to get that done. We're also, you know, there are grants statewide that we're applying for as well as reaching out to some, some of the local business community to see if they are willing to help out. But, you know, even though we don't have a lot of money, I really think that the work that's been done and, and really the creative, the collateral, what they call it, that's been put together is, is I think, top-notch. If you talk to other people around the state, there's, there's a state association that's been created by the Center for Public Policy Priorities and, you know, they, they look at, they look at El Paso County and our efforts here as kind of a model. They, they have told us that they feel like we're, we're way ahead of the curve when it comes to comparing us to a lot of the other communities in Texas and, and I think it's due to the fact that we started early, right? We did start in 2018. It's been almost two years that we've been working on this and preparing for this. And what I really like about it is that, you know, we, Joel said that, you know, this is, this is like a colossal collaboration, it really is, because there are close to 100 people that are on our Complete Count Committee. You know, people, not just in the government sector like us, but education, the private sector, you know, nonprofits, the diocese, you know, faith-based, promotoras. So it's, I mean, it's a, you know, all across the spectrum, we have, we have, we have folks that are involved in this and, and the creative collateral that was, that was put together, you know, was, first of all, what happened was there were surveys done and a focus group done with, with folks that are in the hard-to-count communities here in El Paso County and so we could understand kind of what messaging resonated with them, what, what would work the best to try to, to, to try to get them to understand and to, to, to see the message and understand the importance of being counted. And I think that was an important aspect. You know, the, the tagline that you see here and the, the creative here that you see, the Together Fearless We Count, that was also vetted that, that way, it was vetted through the full Complete Count Committee. It wasn't just, just Nicole and David Herrera back there making the decision on it, it was the whole group that, that agreed upon that as well as the pictures that you saw that we're going to be using with the school bus and the, and the soup bowl and the medicine and all of those were, were devised by the marketing firms that we, that we hired, Sanders Wingo here in El Paso and they're partnering with Taylor Collective Solutions, which is based in Austin, they, they helped put that together. But it was also vetted through the Complete Count Committee and voted upon by the larger group as the best campaign. There were a couple of different options and, and that was the option that received, I think, a pretty overwhelming response that, that it should be what we're going to be using. And so this is, this really is a very collaborative campaign and, you know, we're, I'm nervous, of course, because we're so close, but I, but I think that we're, I think we're, we're very prepared and, and that's, that's, that's really important. What's your favorite, what's your favorite line, Commissioner Robinson? Plan to fail or fail to plan? What, how's it work? There you go. So, so we're, you know, we've got a plan and it's, you know, it's great to, to be able to come and have this presented to everybody because I'm sure people are wondering what, what we're doing. So I just want to thank Nicole, I want to thank the chairs, I want to thank the United Way, I want to thank all of the people that are on, that are on the Complete Count Committee that, I mean, this is a time-consuming endeavor, right? The folks that are on the Complete Count Committee are having, you know, meetings almost on a weekly basis, the people on the, on the action team and the chairs, at least once a week now, probably a couple times a week, there's, there's a phone call or a coordinating, coordination meeting and, and it can be time-consuming, but it's, it's all going to be worth it and I really think that, that we're in a very, very good place.
Thank you, Commissioner. We really appreciate your support and participation. I also would mention too, Betsy challenged the county, County Department Head team to come up with 20 ideas for to help with the census. So we've got a work group together, meeting every week within the county. Paulina and Nicole came out and met with our department heads on Wednesday and gave them an update. I think we're at idea number 37 now. So a lot is going on, you're going to hear a lot more from inside. It's really neat to see how motivated our teams are on the inside to help with this. I did want to ask Mr. Herrera to come up, Mr. David Herrera, because he is a co-chair on the, on the action team and a subcommittee fundraising chair and I did ask him to say a few words this morning. I think they're going to share some things with you. Thank you, David.
Good morning. County Judge Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. We greatly appreciate the partnership. Can you imagine? Just think, take a step back and think, what is an educational system doing with the city and government, faith-based and all these charter schools? One of the things that we understand is Dr. Armando Aguirre, with the director for ESC Region 19, he understood how important this is. Not only does this benefit the county, far west Texas, our region, he understands that as we don't go about this as our community, working as a family, because our community is a family. Our culture has, everything has to do about la familia. How do we work it at home? How do we work interventions at home? All of us come together. So he understood this concept very, at the very beginning and he assigned education as part of the forefront. With this, not only opening doors at every single public school district that's out there, but all the way down to the far west Texas region, we have the opportunity to engage, to have trusted voices in those communities, especially the hard-to-count communities where a lot of the kids will go home and mom, you, dad, you have to do this. And growing up as a child, I was the one translating for my parents who did not speak English. I was them, I was that person. So therefore now we have the census in multiple languages, so we're using every single opportunity, every single leader within our community, which relates down to our parent liaisons, our counselors, our school district, teachers, everybody in those communities. So we are grateful, we are thankful for the wonderful support that you have given us and we're going to stretch every single dollar to assure that we tap on every single county, every single colonia, every single neighborhood that's in those areas to assure that we're properly counted. Again, thank you for the time and greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have some wonderful gifts that we're going to be providing to you guys, which you already have. Thank you. And that's so you can wear on the weekends and when people ask you, you are now a census advocate, along with the U.S. Census Bureau and the Complete Count. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you.
Joel, any further question or comments?
No, I think our next, the next item, we will get into our volunteer plan. So thank you all for, for hearing us today.
Well, thank you. And I'm extremely impressed, Paulina, Nicole, Debbie back there, David. You know, if you look at when we started and you had the press release and you look at it now and you talk to people, I think there's that awareness and it's impressive, but it doesn't surprise me that our community, once they understand something, I don't think there's any other community that would, would react to the level that they do. So our big effort really is awareness and letting them know. And I think, David, what you said, the trusting voices is something that, that we really need. It was a bigger part of our communities before, I think we need to go back to that, that ourselves, each one of the commissioners here, myself, that we're able to go to areas that want to hear from somebody else that would be trusting, that where they'd get away from that fear factor, which to me, it's, it's the, the apathy is there, but the biggest one I think is, is the fear factor. And then the partnerships, I'm, you know, very impressed. I hope that that connection with the veterans assessment, they're really going out there and they're going to places where veterans are difficult to find, which means that they wouldn't be part of the census if they didn't participate. So I'm hoping that also, we're really encouraging that, that's a big part of what we're doing with the veterans and that's a big part of what I feel we need to do. A lot of the veterans do hide away sometimes because of their situations and some other challenges. So we thank you and then we thank the community and the county employees that are listening. I have no doubt, no doubt whatsoever, that there'll be great volunteers and we're not going to have a difficult time getting volunteers from the county. They've always stepped up and I think they're going to step up again this time. Thank you.
Item number seven, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize county employees to receive up to eight paid hours of time for census 2020 efforts.
Good morning again, County Judge and Commissioners. Joel Bishop, Executive Director, Justice and Community Services. I asked Melissa Carrillo to be here with our Director of our Human Resources. She, Human Resources had a great idea regarding volunteers and potentially helping the county engage in the census effort with volunteers. So this morning, we're going to ask the Commissioners to approve a method for the, for the county employees to volunteer and be a part of the census effort. With that, I would want to have Melissa say a few words. This was one of the 37 ideas, so we have 36 more to report to you.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Joel. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. As Mr. Bishop describes, we've been putting our heads together for quite some time since we've been hearing from the census team here in El Paso. We started thinking of creative ways for us to really engage and help the community reach that threshold that we want. So one of the things that we thought about was allowing department heads and elected officials the discretion to let their employees participate in the block walks and the volunteer activities that start coming up in about May. So one of the things we wanted to bring to your attention is if the court was interested, we'd ask that you approve eight, up to eight volunteer hours for employees to engage in census activities. Of course, those would have to be coordinated through the United Way program that the census team has put together and then of course, it would have to be at the discretion of their department head or elected official. If the court was interested in doing that, by order, we would want to work with the auditor's office to create a separate Cronos code so that we can appropriately track those hours that were committed to this census program for 2020.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioners? Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Judge. So we're talking about eight hours during a workout, workday or, okay?
Yes, it would be during, during work hours is what we're asking, at the discretion of the department heads. We realize not all employees would be able to do this and not, not all department heads would be able to find the time for this, but at their discretion, if they can work this in somehow, we would, we just want them to have the ability and the authority from the Commissioners Court to be able to do that.
Well fundamentally, I don't, would not have a problem with that, but I need to ask our legal people as far as legally, how do we stand on that issue?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Talked to Joel a little bit about this last week when we saw that the presentation. And so just to give you some background, in terms of the county's participation in the Complete Count Committee and also in terms of the other activities that the court has provided to the census marketing efforts as well, those items and those considerations were under the economic development, public purpose findings. So in other words, there was a finding by this Commissioners Court that participation in census efforts is for the benefit of the community. In other words, you're seeking to get and ensure a complete count from El Paso County. That in turn leads to better information on the type of population that you have, in terms of anything that comes out of that for policy considerations from transportation to business information. Those statistics and that data comes back to the county and it is beneficial for you all to ensure that you have that accurate count. Now, as it pertains to the employees' participation and as to whether or not they can go ahead and donate those volunteers' hours, it would be the same type of philosophy and, and hearing the presentation earlier and again, hearing what the Commissioners Court has drawn to or has indicated is important for this county, it would fall under that same public purpose analysis and for all those reasons that have been stated on, on the record. And so this would not be considered an unconstitutional gift of public funds or outside the realm of what you all could consider, but for those, again, for those factors that this court has considered, it would, it would permit for you all to do so. And of course, in terms of working out the hours, that would have to be, of course, at the discretion and at, with coordination with each of the either elected officials' departments, department heads, to figure out what works best. Definitely should not infringe on the day-to-day operation or, or work that is required, but my understanding that is, this is completely on a volunteer basis, it is not mandated. And so whoever wants to participate can reach out to however you all decide to coordinate to make, to make that decision. And again, it doesn't have to be up to eight hours, it could be anything from there and in between. Thank you.
Fundamentally, we were saying it's voluntarily.
Yes, sir.
So that time that we are investing would not be any different than, like many of us serve on various committees outside of, in those times or during the workday. So it would be no different than that?
That is correct, but we want to make a distinction here, Betsy. Ms. Keller just reminded me, when we say volunteer, it's not donated volunteer time. Folks who do decide to participate can volunteer to participate, but if they do so, we will, we will pay them for that participation in those census, census activities. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Christina, and there, as employees are protected, if they were to get hurt or workers' comp or anything like that, they're okay if, if that happened during their volunteer hours?
Well, because this would be considered work-paid time to do such, some activities with the census, they would be, yes, sir.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
And just, just for, just for clarification, what would be the manner in which we, we would make sure that folks are actually doing the volunteer, the work with, with the census instead of, not to say any of our employees are going to do this, but you know, we want to make sure that all of the eight hours that they're, you know, allowed to spend are actually spent with the census doing the work.
Great question and I went down and to get an answer to that on, on Thursday, I met with the United Way and, who I appreciate, they've set up a structure through their system, through Volunteer El Paso, and that'll be managed through the city of El Paso. The volunteer hours will be managed there. In addition, we would, we'll be able to query them through Cronos, a special code we'll set up in Cronos so we'll know how many hours were donated. But there's an approval process that I was shown as I went down there to where they'll be checking sign-in sheets and then approve the volunteer hours and there will be a level of verification that takes place through the United Way's portal that the city is managing. Nicole, did you have any other, anything else to add to, to the city's management of the volunteer hours?
I don't think so. I would only say that we're going to be encouraging folks because we're expecting such a large volume of volunteers to volunteer for a specific event and that way it's much easier for us to track them in the way that, that Joel, I don't know what I was about to call him. That Joel just indicated.
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen. But that's really all that we're asking is that, is that they, they volunteer for specific events because we, you know, it is a large volume of folks and I think if there's anybody that's interested in just helping coordinate volunteers, we'd also be interested in that as well.
Excellent, excellent.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you guys mind taking a quick picture so we can each post and discuss in our Facebook?
Yes, absolutely.
We need Deb and Margot up here too.
Oh, I love it.
Got the hat going, great.
Okay, one more.
And then I'd love to make the first.
See you soon.
See you soon. Judge, we are now able to go into the executive session items. Did you want to move into that? Okay. Commissioners' Court will recess into executive session for item number 28 pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners' Court has reconvened into a regular open session. At this time, we'd like to go ahead and take item number 29 from the addendum to the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action to consider waiving the sick leave donation policy requirements for certain employees who have exhausted sick leave.
I'd be glad to get this started. First of all, I wanted to introduce Sergeant Rick Aguilar. Is he still here? He had to leave. I know that because of certain restrictions, I cannot go into any medical issues unless I have his permission. So, I don't know where I stand on that, but the bottom line is we're here to discuss the issue that he has run out of all types of leave. And maybe you, Pete, can explain more of where he's at right now, but from what I understand, he is at his last paycheck that's coming up this Friday. After that, he's exhausted all means of income for him, and he's been with the department, with the county over 25 years.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda and taking the time to look at it. We're actually here, I'm here today on behalf of two, two of my members, two county employees that have both were unable to utilize the county sick leave pool program because they already had a catastrophic illness before the designated contribution period. One of them has not been getting paid since November. The other one exhausted his sick leave in the beginning of December, and he did have a couple hours in December, but according to the current policy, you have to have a balance of 40 hours when you donate your eight hours, which he did not have. He's been surviving on the vacation that he's earned over 25 years of serving this county, this community. My other member has been surviving off of our fundraisers and donations from generous people and organizations. So, we're, you know, we're here today to just ask if the court would, if there's any way they would consider taking some type of immediate action, you know, respectfully to help these individuals. I learned that the county sick leave pool has 60,000 hours in it, and it, it's hard to see employees that are either one, their only option is to leave the county to financially survive or not get paid when there's, when there's hours available. You know, the burden that these, and I'm sure there's other county employees that are in the same boat, but as you mentioned, Sergeant Aguilar, he'll be receiving his last paycheck this coming Friday, this pay period. And like I said, the officer, Mike Hernanes, he hasn't been getting paid since November.
Judge, I don't know if it would be acceptable. I know there's other people behind you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Feroni that wanted to speak. If that's permissible, can we let him? Now is your time, Chief.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Marco Vargas with the sheriff's office. Just to reiterate some of the points that Peter Feroni mentioned, you know, the, I think it's important for not just employees from our department, but employees from the entire county to be considered when you, when we're looking at making changes to this emergency pool leave policy. They're our number-one assets, and, you know, we need to take care of them because, I mean, within the county, we are a family, and that's what we view our employees and our officers as families. I've had the pleasure of working with, side by side with both of them, and just like any other county employee, you know, we just want you guys to make, take that into consideration, that, you know, things happen, catastrophic injuries happen, catastrophic illnesses come about, and, you know, we should, we all had a crystal ball and be able to say, okay, well, this year, I'm going to donate into the emergency leave pool policy because I'm going to come up with something. And we obviously know that's not the case, so we'd just like for you all, your consideration in making some adjustments to this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Pete?
If I could jump in again, you know, speaking on revisiting and amending this policy, and I don't know that that's going to do anything immediately to help Mike and Rick, but it might be something to look at, that if you already have a catastrophic illness, you know, before this designated period where you have to donate hours, you know, maybe that those individuals that have a catastrophic illness, you know, are waived from that requirement to get into this sick leave pool. You know, just a suggestion on, you know, if there's any way going forward to amend this policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Judge. There's a song by a group called the Pointer Sisters. They say, "We are family." Those are words, but what does that mean? My interpretation of what they say, when you say "family," it means that when someone is in need, we should be there to support them. It's unfortunate that things happen medically, psychologically, whatever case may be, where someone is unable, not because they don't want to, but they're unable to take care of themselves. of themselves. They don't have the resources. You know, personally, I feel I'm blessed. I'm fortunate to have served, had a career in the military. And I have, if, if, I get fired from this job tomorrow, I will have an income. But some are not as blessed as I am. So therefore, anything that I can do, anything that we can do, you know, if, if, if we really, if we really sincere when we say "we are family," we are family. In fact, just this past weekend, I buried one of my cousins. Unfortunately, she didn't have insurance for her burial. Because the good Lord blessed me, I was able to provide the income, the resources to help bury my cousin. If I didn't have the resources, what, what happened to her? She's family. And family take care of family. So if we, if we really say the, well, let me put it this way, I'd be very blunt about it. If you don't mean it, don't say it. Period. When you say "we are family," if you don't mean it, don't say it. My, I say, we, we need to find a way to support these two individuals, their families, as well as any others, not because they were the sheriff's department, whether any member of our, as we say, our family, that is in dire need, in dire for support, we should be able to do, make every reasonable effort to come to, to, to their aid. So whatever I can do to support it, I'm with it.
Commissioner Leon?
I just wanted to, to make a couple of other points before we go into executive. Number one, I wanted to thank everybody that showed up to support these two employees. And while I was out of town this weekend, I had plenty of time to ponder on this, and I knew there was a lot of challenges. And one of the last things I wanted to hear, and which I heard this morning, is why we can't do it. I wanted to hear how we can work things out to make it happen. Not more than half an hour ago, we approved eight paid hours for the census program, something we've never done before. So I think there's a way, and if there is a way, we'll find a way. And these are two employees they want to keep. We don't know if they want to stay 30 years, 35 years. We just went to the pending ceremonies where there was employees that have been here more than 35 years. So I know that this court feels the same way we feel, Commissioner Robinson, I feel, and Judge, and Commissioner Stott. So hopefully, we'll find a way to make this happen as, as we go into executive session.
And, you know, I just want to make sure that especially the deputies know, you know, are very sympathetic about this. We're, I mean, like Commissioner Leon said, we, we have to find a way. But, you know, I came in here thinking, you know, it was not as difficult because we create policies, we create certain procedures that really then work against us when, when we get to these situations. And so during the whole weekend, you can't imagine the amount of time that was spent with Melissa, the county attorneys, with, with everybody that we can think of that, that has something to do with this. And it's complicated in the sense that we created our own barriers, and now we have to figure a way, how do we get out of those barriers? In some instances, we found that even if we changed some of the policies, it wouldn't help one of the individuals. And so that's where we're at right now, is not necessarily, has not, nothing to do with how we feel about it, but we also have an obligation legally and, and that we created these policies, and now we have to figure a way how to undo them and create other policies, and then look at all these, you know, how do we get there? How do we get there? So I think by, you know, I would like to recommend we go back into, into special session and, and discuss these matters so that we can understand clearly, you know, that the decision is made with a full understanding of every, every possible scenario. But if, if I can tell you, everyone here in this court is wanting 100% to, how do we help these two individuals that mean so much to us? But then we have procedures and things that we have to look at. So Commander?
Thank you, County Judge. I'm one of those employees that's been here over 35 years. And through the years that I've been here, I've seen a lot of employees, and not only in the sheriff's office, that have gotten sick. And I, I agree with you that I know you're limited in your, your laws, your restrictions. I would like to recommend at some point, working with CLEED and working with the county, that we set up a committee that can identify what we need to do at the legislative area to see if we can change the law to be able to address this. I do believe here in this room, there's people that are ill that eventually could be affected down the line. None of us know what could happen to us. Well, I just think that it's something that if we truly do care about our county employees, and I know you do, is that it's something that we can't pretend that it's not going to happen. It will eventually happen to somebody, and we should have at least something in place, or at least start working and putting something in place to identify those individuals and help them out. When I hear there's 60,000, 60,000 hours of sick leave or whatever, I know that I would have donated even more of my time if I need to, because when I retire, I'm not going to take all my sick leave with me, whatever. And I know, you know, I, I want to be able to, and I'm sure there's other employees that can do the same thing. So we can just brainstorm, put something together, and then even at the state level, through CLEED or whatever, identify and talk to our state reps to see if we can push for some changes in the way the law is written, or the way the restrictions are. I hope that we can at least accomplish that. And like you said, even if it's not for this group of people, which is unfortunate, but eventually, we can put something in place that at least covers some kind of protection for those individuals down the line.
Commander, thank you. Really respect your, your comments.
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Let me add one more comment. I put it in this perspective. I had a career, I served 25 years in the US Army. And I was in a combat zone for two tours. And I relate that to law enforcement officers that we, that we're talking about today. When there's a crisis, which, which direction do they go? Do they run towards a crisis, or they run away from the crisis? I submit to you that when there's a crisis, they're running that way, towards the crisis. Whereas, you know, another gets civilian population, but they're trying to find a place to go where they can take cover. These guys are running towards the situation. So we need to do whatever we can do to find a way.
Yeah. No stone will be unturned to, to figure out what we need to do. So can we do that now? Christina? Yes, please. Uh huh.
Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss item number 28 pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Thank you.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. The El Paso County Law Library would like to invite you to your wedding at the window on Friday, February 14th, 2020. Say "I do" at the Law Library. Group weddings performed 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. The fee is $50. The Law Library will provide the officiant, professional photographer, a 4x6 frame, a delicious wedding cupcake for the bride and groom, and the wedding march to begin the ceremony. Couples must meet the state of Texas marriage requirements as stated in the county clerk's website. Contact the Law Library to indicate your interest at eplawlibrary@epcounty.com or dial (915) 546-2245.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119 or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th in observance of the President's Day holiday.
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020.
The El Paso County Law Library would like to invite you to your wedding at the Window on Friday, February 14th, 2020. Say "I do" at the Law Library. Group weddings perform at 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. The fee is $50. The Law Library will provide the officiant, professional photographer, a 4x6 frame, a delicious wedding cupcake for the bride and groom, and the wedding march to begin the ceremony. Couples must meet the state of Texas marriage requirements as stated in the county clerk's website. Contact the Law Library to indicate your interest at eplawlibrary@epcounty.com, or dial (915) 546-2245.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The locations of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabody Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Vanley, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to
For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call S. Sevna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at sevna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular session. Item number 29, discuss and take appropriate action to consider waiving the sick leave donation policy requirements for certain employees who have exhausted sick leave.
You ready? Commissioner Leon?
Sure. Coming out of executive session, we've discussed this issue with our attorneys, with our county attorneys, bless you, with HR personnel, and we've been very cautious to make sure that this decision affects all our employees. This is taxpayer money, and it covers not one person, or two persons, or three, it covers all our county employees, and it does achieve the public purpose. And as we have all said, that our most valued asset, it's not the vehicles we drive, the buildings we have, but it's our employees. And this goes to show that we are very concerned about their health, and that they're productive here, but we need healthy employees to be productive. And I'll make the motion, but because it's a little complex for me, I would prefer that Christina Sanchez read.
Yes, sir. Are we ready for the motion?
We are ready.
Good afternoon. Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Based on discussions in executive session and based on what I'm hearing from Commissioner Leon, the motion would be to amend the county's sick leave policy effective immediately for all county employees, and eliminate the requirements for employees to donate eight hours of sick leave time and have 40 hours remaining in the sick leave pool, and eliminate the requirement that employees cannot exceed the FMLA 480 hours of eligibility. Furthermore, my understanding is that you would like to direct your HR director to come back with a final policy that encompasses the above referenced issues and any other additional issues after some time and some consideration.
Yes, that's correct. I saw move.
I'm sorry, it's a sick leave pool policy. I just wanted to clarify.
Just clarification that they would be eligible immediately.
That is correct. If you make that motion and it carries today, it would apply to all. Yes, sir.
I second that motion, and we also, in the changing of policy that you guys will be working on, we're talking about extenuating circumstances. Catastrophic and extenuating circumstances, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I second the motion.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'd like to go ahead and go back to the regular order of the agenda. Item number eight, purchasing. Pursuant to text correction, this will have a correction from the county attorney's office. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.024, approve and authorize the use of an exemption to purchasing procedures that allows a contract for the purchase of a personal or professional services regarding the historic site tourist promotion and preservation services agreement between the County of El Paso and the San Elisario Genealogy and Historical Society.
Deborah Correjo Troll, county purchasing agent. Before you is a request to use an authorized exemption. The state of Texas does allow that in cases where professional services are offered, but they would be problematic to compete due to a specialty, or brain power, or knowledge, or some type of service that has been provided by the same organization, the Commissioners Court maintains the option to authorize me to step away from policy and not do a competitive process and use the exemption, 262-024, professional services. And that's what we're requesting for the San Elisario Genealogical and Historical Society.
And just for clarification, there's two separate items here. One, it's to do the waiver for the exemption, so I'd ask if the court could do two separate motions to reflect the waiver for one, and then two, for the approval of the contract.
Oh, I thought they were doing that in...
Okay. We have a regular. We have a regular, okay. So then, just to be clear, then, the motion is just to approve the waiver under the Purchasing Act, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I make that motion as described by Ms. Sanchez. Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Robinson? Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, approve the interlocal agreement with the City of El Paso using Solicitation Number 2018-431, automotive, fuel, diesel, and unleaded, awarded to Rio Valley Biofuels LLC, Global Alternative Fuels LLC, to provide onsite bulk diesel fuel for county vehicles in amounts indicated on the contract price sheets.
Deborah Correjo Troll, county purchasing agent. In this case, we'd like for the courts to consider authorizing us to use a current City of El Paso contract, and their full contract name is Automotive Fuel Diesel and Unleaded. However, we are only going to use the diesel portion, their unleaded portion was canceled. But we would like to join with the city and use the contract so that we can obtain our diesel at their prices, which were bid. And this is only just, in case anyone's interested, this is just one of the first steps of partnering more tightly with our public agency partners in the area. We've joined together both the city and many of the school districts and the county, and we're going to start looking at ways that we can expand our purchasing dollars through these types of interlocals and using one another's contracts.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to see item 14 of Commissioner's. Are you okay with that? Because we've got some people here for the same item, right? It's 14, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. Item number 14.
Yes, do we have the, yeah, we have Andrea.
Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Historic Site Tourist Promotion and Preservation Services Agreement with the San Elisario Genealogy and Historical Society, a Texas nonprofit corporation for the tourist promotion of the historic Los Portales Museum and Old County Jail located in San Elisario, Texas, for $52,598 from October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. Funding is available in SR Tourist Promotion Los Portales, contract number 2019-0665.
Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. And I believe we have a presentation. Okay. With here me today also is Mr. Al Borrego, in case there's any questions after we review the presentation. Thank you. So today before you is the contract renewal for operations of Los Portales Museum and the Old County Jail in San Elisario. These are two registered Texas historic landmarks that are also individually listed on the Federal National Register Historic District in the city of San Elisario. They were budgeted through the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund at $42,188, and there's been quite a few changes to the contract. We added on language prohibiting the use of third or outside party use and the acceptance of donations, and we also are to undergo a redistribution of the site keys and a lock and key replacement. Applicant has also requested a $10,000 increase in the personnel budget to hire an additional part-time staffer, and they've also requested use of their advertising budget to promote any event taking place within the San Elisario Historic District. They've also requested to be able to use local advertisements, which is not allowable through the hotel occupancy tax. So this would be two areas that we would need your assistance with reallocating or coming up with additional funds for that gap, at least with the personnel changes. So currently, we're budgeted at just over $42,000. We would need your approval to allocate additional funding from the hotel occupancy tax revenue that we have in order to cover the cost of the additional staffing.
Question.
Commissioner Robinson?
What is the, excuse me, wow. What is their contribution thereto?
They operate and manage the, our two historic assets, which is the Old County Jail and the Los Portales Museum. So the budget that is currently allocated is for two part-time staff, and they're asking for an increase in staffing to hire on another part-time staff person.
Okay, but there's no financial contribution from them?
We provide them with funding to operate county-owned museums.
Okay.
That's their contribution. They provide staffing, they provide special events, marketing, and advertising of the two sites, and they also staff them for us.
And this is effective when?
This agreement has been in place for about 20 years, and through the professional services purchasing exemption that you just heard from Ms. Deborah Correjo, that's how we're able to continue the renewals each year.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Borrego, you might comment on the...
Commissioners, Judge, thank you for having us here today. Just to give you a little background on what we do, our annual budget runs at about $105,000 a year, so it kind of gives you an idea how much we put into it. We're all volunteers. We do have funding that we've gotten from the county for years. When I came on nine years ago as a president, the budget was at about $47,000. And that year when I came on, the year before, they didn't use the money, so of course it got dropped down, and for years, as you can imagine, every year I've been trying to get it to go back up, it never has. So a few years ago, I believe it was four or five years ago, we took over the county jail, which was refurbished. It took about two years before we finally were able to take control of it. The way we took control of the jail is, I made a proposition to the court that we could do the jail for free. The only thing the jail, the county had to do was pay for the electricity and the maintenance of the building. So we said we would furnish it, we would do everything, we would run it, and we would open it, and we'd take care of it. We also had an interlocal agreement with two local businesses to provide parking and provide restrooms, which there are none. And there's no heating, no air conditioning in the jail, as you can imagine, it's 1850, so it's there. But we'd said we would do it for free, and of course, the court jumped on it, no doubt. And we're happy to do it because it's a big asset to the district. The whole purpose of what we do is to promote the district, the Mission Trail, and all of the assets that the county has, and all the historic things that we have in the county. As you can see by the contract, I mean, it states exactly what we do. The, out of the $42,000, only 20-something thousand is for docents. That docent, you can imagine, is supposed to cover six days a week, two museums. How do you do it? You don't. So we get, we had a volunteer that put in over 16,000 hours working the jail. He passed away last year. So now we've been struggling a little bit, so we have some volunteers coming in, coming there, I open the jail. I mean, it's a constant thing with the jail. But as we've changed personnel here in the county, they don't know that history, so they just assume that that's just the way it is. But that's not the way it is. I mean, we sit there, and then they said, okay, well, somebody's got to be working the jail, and somebody's got to be working the museum. Well, how do you do that? When you have six days and one person? Either somebody's at the jail, or somebody's at the museum, or we have to find a volunteer, and you can imagine how hard it is to find volunteers. But we do. Now, we actually have other people that help us at the Portales Museum. Not at the jail, because we don't, we can't even get anybody to do that, but we contract with AARP, and we get workers that come in throughout the year, and they help us with the yard cleaning, with maintenance of the building, that kind of stuff, and we just got a new one, so now we're back in track. But that's how we operate. We operate mainly volunteers. All of us are volunteers there, and we promote a lot. As most of you know, I'm usually out promoting something. That's what we do there at the county. We're asking for a, and I always say, I always call that person, we have two people. We split the 20,000 between two people to give them basically three days and three days at the museum. We can't have anybody at the jail. So I said, let me try, and I'll see, and thank you to Valerie and the team. They put it in the contract this year that maybe we can get a half a person to cover three days at the jail. Because now I do have one volunteer that works at the jail. So as long as we have that volunteer, we're in good shape. But we try to get volunteers. We also run the Veterans Museum. And suddenly, so we have three museums we run. The Veterans Museum has nothing to do with our contract, but the Veterans Committee is part of our, out of our group. Veterans Committee works out of San Elisario Genealogy Historical Society. So we run the Veterans Museum as well. Right now, I closed a gallery which used to be open, and the people would go through the gallery to get into Veterans Museum. We can't get a veteran to run the Veterans Museum. So right now, since November, the Veterans Museum has been closed, except for tours. But that's what we do in San El. We do 85... We do eighty-five events per year in the district. That's what we do.
Good deal.
So we do a lot of stuff. We promote, we promote all over the place. I'm all over the country, all over Mexico, promoting what we do. And that's, thanks to Valerie with her, with her thing here, it's, it's, she's pushing what we're doing. And that, that kind of gives you an idea of what we do. Thank you, and we appreciate that. And I, but I did want to say, I'm not happy with the contract. I'm not happy with the key distribution, because I'm like, what does the county need keys for? I mean, you, it's your building, but nothing in it's yours, except a, a couple of tables and some chairs. But I'm like, why? But anyway, it's in there, I'm not happy with it. But if that's the only way we can continue, it's February, and we should have had the contract in October. And, you know, it's, it's hard. It's hard. We've been, I've been dealing with county for many years. Some, I think Commissioner Leon is probably the longest one that's here now, and Vince, who's not here. But it's hard. I mean, we've, we've had periods where we don't get our first reimbursement check. And that's how we work, it's reimbursement. So it's not like we got to have our own money. Our little organization has to have the money to pay people and then get reimbursed. And at one point, it took until August to get our first check one year. And we had, we were carrying the county for about eighteen thousand dollars. Right now, we're carrying the county for three thousand six hundred and twenty-six, our little organization. But we work, we do stuff, and, and we appreciate the help to promote what we've got, you know, but it's not easy. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just amazed at how much you do with so little, if you look at it. And I think going back to what Commissioner Robinson, if you say your family, your family, and if we believe in, in our historical society, then do we believe in it? And do we support it? And so I guess you're here at least to start for us to, to see what can we do? It's such an important component of everything that we're doing with respect to history and, and preservation of our history. I think we also need to show a little bit more, you know, skin in the game than, than allowing the volunteers to take the bulk or the lion's share of the, of the challenges.
Do we have motion already?
Robinson.
Do we have a motion?
Where are we going to get the fifteen thousand dollars?
So if.
That would have to come out of the general fund?
It's my understanding, so the contract as presented is for fifty-two thousand dollars. That includes the ten thousand dollars for staffing, which does, we will, we can use hot funds for that. It does not include the fifteen, is that correct, Valerie?
That is correct. That was presented just as an option, if it's the prerogative for the applicant to continue to try to use his budget for advertising of the museum, for events that are outside of the museum or within the historic district. And also because local advertisements are not allowable expenditures under the hotel occupancy tax. So if it is the will of the court to allocate general funds to accommodate those needs, that would be something that you would, would be, would, would want to consider.
You need to add something?
So, okay, wait, wait, let me back up. In the backup, there's an Exhibit B, and it shows personnel thirty-one thousand, supplies four thousand, postage seven hundred. And then it says fifteen thousand for advertising the jail, Los Portales, and any other events taking place within either of these two locations. This is another fifteen thousand on top of that, correct?
That would be correct. We've explained to the applicant the way that the hotel occupancy tax has restrictions on local advertisements. And he has claimed that he's been in the past able to use his advertising budget for local advertisements of any event, whether it's in the museum or not. Erica and I did quite a bit of extensive research on previous contracts and did not find that the language has ever indicated as such. With regards to, to the time period that it takes to, to receive reimbursements, we can only go as quickly as the cooperation that we have with the documentation that's requested from the auditors. If the auditors request copies of, of advertisements to show where they were distributed online or, or here locally, we, we are obligated to provide that documentation to them.
And, and just for the court's information, so we're on the contract, but in terms of the additional fifteen thousand dollars, the Commissioners' Court, there is an item on your agenda, it's item number fifteen, which is the authorization to provide up to that fifteen thousand dollars in reimbursement of those qualified expenses. And then, of course, to, to, to further waive any parks or facility rental fees.
No, that's different.
Oh, it's different.
That's a different item.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's a different item. This item, what, what's being requested is fifteen thousand dollars advertising, to advertise events in the, in the historic district of San Elizario. Separate from, doesn't have to, they could choose without, unless we enter a contract that sets parameters, and no offense, I, I know Mr. Borrego would not do this, but if he chose to go advertise that there's an art walk this weekend at the private businesses, he could, to bring in visitors. If he chose to advertise that, you know, on his, and boost it on a Facebook page, he could do that. Unless we set an agreement and for that fifteen thousand dollars, what it can be used for, or unless the court requires them to come back and apply each time, my recommendation would be that we go back and create, if the court wants to do that, one, it's a mid-year budget request, we will need to go to contingencies, and that you direct us to go sit down and create an agreement as to what those dollars could be spent on and bring it back. Like, what are the, like, who does it have to reach out to? What kind of events can it promote?
And what timeframe, and is it time-sensitive? Are we going to hold back something that needs to happen, or?
No, the, and that, that's really confusing for me even. So for years, last year it went up to fifteen thousand, our advertising budget on our regular contract. For years, it was ten. Last year went to fifteen, or two years ago went to fifteen. That money, that advertising money, we've always used it for anything that the genealogy and historical society supports to promote tourism in San Elizario. That's what we've used it for, for whatever it is. Now, what's really confusing is the language that I get now. The night, no, it's got to be for advertising the Portales or the jail only. Well, where am I going to spend fifteen thousand dollars to, to advertise the jail and the Portales? Especially when I got to spend it fifty miles outside of El Paso County.
And that's, that's a requirement for us using hotel occupancy tax. This isn't something like we dreamed up.
Yes.
We may just have been, as we've been getting better at managing our contracts and our finances, we have started tightening down on anything that might be out of compliance.
Yes, and we've always been in compliance. We don't advertise anything locally. We do put our brochure out locally, the brochure that we did, we put it out locally. And in San Antonio, it's in, in over a thousand locations, from San Antonio to Lordsburg to Silver City. We, we put our brochure out everywhere, and we use hot funds for that. But the way I do it in El Paso is the company we use to do that, they give me El Paso and Las Cruces free, because Las Cruces is forty-five miles. So Las Cruces and El Paso are free, so we don't pay for that. That's how I get around that, if you want to call it getting around it. But everything else, we do outside. That's why all of, the bulk of our money that we spend is in the brochure that goes all over the place. Then we do spend, we do spend money promoting, promoting, but most of my promotion is Facebook, all of that kind of stuff. The, the, the question isn't, where do you spend the money, are you doing it right? Of course, you, you want to stay within the hot funding guidelines. The question is, do you, can you promote an event that's on Main Street, an art market on Main Street, that, which we've been doing forever, for nine years that I've been there, and before that, they were doing it? No, you can only spend it now, you can, even though we support it, because that's part of my aim on the contract, is to sponsor and promote all heritage and cultural sites in El Paso County. You know, who else is doing it? Nobody's doing that, except for us. You know, we're the only ones that promote everywhere. There's not one other person promoting anywhere else that I know of. You know, but that's what we do. We promote everything we can do, which to me, if you're promoting tourism in El Paso County, and you're promoting tourism in San Elizario Historic District, then you're within the guidelines of hot funding. If I'm wrong, well, then I guess I'm wrong, but I doubt it. You know, that's, I'm like, I don't know that I'm wrong there. To me, I think I'm, I'm within the guidelines, it's about tourism. Right?
And Judge Commissioners, this is a particular, this agreement is for the county to contract for services to operate the Los Portales Museum and the Old County Jail. What I'm hearing is I think we need to work on a separate contract, if the court would like, to use San Eli to do other tourist promotion besides the jail and the museum specifically. If you want to work with San Eli Genealogical Society to do general tourism promotion, that would be a separate contract, and we would need to sit down and define what those parameters are.
But wouldn't we have to go out to bid to do that separately?
Well, if it's less than fifty thousand dollars, we may not have to, and there may be another exemption, I'd have to double-check with Deborah.
And also, there's, there's recognition as well under three eighty-one economic development for these type of activities as well, and you can, and it does authorize the court without running afoul of any, of gift of public funds, to provide money to an outside organization to do these type of activities.
But, but what we, the kind of compliance matter, things that we would need to put into that agreement would also be, are you going to allow them, you know, and, and how we fund it, depending on some of the parameters in that agreement? Does, does the advertising have to be outside, fifty miles outside or not? Those kind of things would all be factors on how we would fund this kind of agreement and how flexible it would be for the genealogical society to use those funds.
I think it would, to me, I don't care about the fifty-mile thing. We've been working with that for nine years, and we're fine. We can do local, Facebook, that kind of stuff. We do that all the time, and we run like eleven Facebook pages, you know, that we, that we run. And we, we have our own website, we have our own websites, and we do a lot of stuff already locally. And we get the word on enough, but.
But with the restriction out, Mr. Borrego, the restriction for it being used like fifty miles outside of El Paso wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, it's not that big of, it's not a problem. I mean, if, if it causes too much of a problem to change it, just leave it. It's not a big deal to me. I mean, we, we, I think we do more damage, and I mean, damage in a good way. We do more damage going out and promoting now. I think we, we, with our conference that we do that you're going to see on number fifteen, that thing now has gotten huge. We've got speakers coming from all over the place to speak for that, and that's gotten to be a real big thing on, on, on the Camino Real thing. So we, we do a lot of stuff outside that, that flat out comes out of my pocket, you know, because who's paying for that?
So, so should we just, we're on number eight right now, right?
Fourteen.
We're on fourteen or eight?
We're on, we're on fourteen, the actual contract for Los Portales. So if you all approve this item today, it does include money for them to be able to promote and advertise Los Portales and the Old County Jail. If you'd like for us to bring you back another agreement, for them to have additional funding to promote all things in the historic district, we'll do that.
Well, that's not what fifteen is going to do then?
No, fifteen is about a specific conference.
Okay.
And, and, and Commissioners, the, the fifteen that's in the contract now, I don't think we need more than that at this point.
He's saying that he doesn't need a separate fifteen thousand dollar agreement.
No.
He's saying use that fifteen thousand dollars that's in there.
Mess with that right now. I mean, it'd be nice to have another fifteen. If you guys want to throw another fifteen in there, thank you. But it's not absolutely necessary. What I'd like to see is no limitations to what we can, not, not, no, you got to have limitations, but you got to, not, not so tight as far as just using it to promote the fifteen. I mean, I can't understand why we would be at fifteen thousand to promote the museum and the jail. That's ridiculous.
So Judge Commissioners, what we'd ask, in speaking with legal and how we would do this going forward, we'd ask that you approve the contract as it's written and proposed today, then we would work with Al and Valerie and Andrea to bring back amendment to this one and a separate one to separate out which funding is for advertising for general events in the district, and amending this one to bring the budget back down, using that percentage, that, that difference to fund the other contract. But the chances are, we're going to have to, depending on what the new contract looks like, if it's fifty miles out and it's, serves a, a purpose to bring people to hotels, then it can still qualify for hot. If it doesn't, we're going to have to identify a funding source.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah, I think that's, be fine, yeah. We can, okay, we're fixed.
So the way it's written right now is that it has to be fifty miles out?
Right now, it's just for Los Portales and the jail. But if you approve it today like that, we know we'll be in compliance. In the meantime, then we'll work on an amendment to bring that budget down and create a separate agreement to do general tourist promotion. And depending on what all is in that separate agreement, we'll evaluate whether or not it still qualifies for hot funds or whether it needs to be general fund funded.
And, and really, the purpose for that, and if I could just to provide that information for Mr. Borrego as well, is because it does, it does matter in terms of accounting, in terms of where the, the funding's coming from, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't address and sparse that out in the, in an amendment in, above itself. We just need to make sure that we're clear and auditors clear, and whoever's making these payments are out, where, you know, which activities, when they see the invoice, when they see that receipt, where it needs to go. And so that's, that's the purpose of that. It's not to create more problems, but just so that those payments can be paid quickly and we can easily access, access, have accessibility to that to pay those out.
And, and for me, it's also a matter of just our, the way we budget things, right?
That's exactly right.
I mean, even though it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's in the middle of a, of a fiscal year, and so it wasn't budgeted for, and we would have to go into contingencies. And just my philosophy on that is we need to be as careful as possible when we come to, when, when we're starting to do more and more allocations in the middle of the year that haven't been budgeted for, and we keep going in into our contingencies. So I think we need to take that into account.
My, my favorite line on the contract, and things we aim to do, is to assist and complement activities sponsored by other entities that'll lead to improved cultural and historical understanding. And, and one of the things we've done since we've been there, in two, twenty thirteen, we, we got the district designated a state cultural district. Did that, sunny seventeen, we got that done. And, and we did that in order to be, and there's only like twenty-four in the state. In order to be a state cultural district, you got to be part of a city, and we weren't even part of the city. But we were doing so many cultural events and things that TCA, the Texas Commission on the Arts, actually went ahead and gave us that designation. So we're doing our thing there.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Oh, and I didn't mean to make it sound like right now our checks aren't coming. They're coming pretty good.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Okay, so I'll move to approve number fourteen.
Fifteen separate, yeah.
Number fourteen. Right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leon.
Before I vote, Mr. Borrego, now, you are satisfied with the county's speedier paying process now? Okay.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So item number fifteen, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the San Elizario Genealogy and Historical Society Service Agreement to provide up to fifteen thousand dollars in reimbursement of qualified expenses. Funding is available in SR Tourist Promotion Operation Expenses General, contract number twenty twenty zero one one two. Further waive parks facility rental fees in the amount of one thousand five hundred twenty dollars related to the celebration of the twenty-ninth Annual San Elizario Historic Conference and the Fourth Annual Rio Grande Festival, running concurrently April twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development. Before you now is the contract for the Twenty-Ninth Annual San Elizario Historic Conference, as Erica mentioned, runs concurrently with the Rio Grande Festival. The conference includes annual meetings and panel discussions, in addition to cultural arts, live entertainment throughout the entire weekend, and it takes place in the San Elizario Historic District. The conference has been proven in the past to increase hotel occupancy at more than a hundred reservations on average. Overall, the. Overall, the events bring in over 4,000 participants throughout the region, including our sister cities throughout the Camino Real, and our neighboring states of New Mexico, California, and Arizona. The applicant has requested $15,000 in allowable expenditures per the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. The maximum award amount is 5,000 per event. The budget request would assist with facility rentals and production costs and artist fees. And this is in addition to a request for a waiver of fees for the use of the Veterans Placita in San Elisario, which will be presented to you through a separate agreement, but just noted as part of the overall event. Are there any questions about this agreement?
This is the first time we've approved this particular allocation. I believe we've done it at least two other years, maybe longer, I can't remember, but I know we've done it at least a couple times for this particular event.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead and go back to the regular order for item number 10. Approve the purchase of one prisoner transport bus with lockdown cages for the County of El Paso Sheriff's Department using Byboard Contract 54917 awarded to Longhorn Bus Sales of Houston, Texas, in the amount of $152,790. Purchasing approved on January 28, 2020. Funding is available in SG TX VEMP 20 cap outlays.
Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. With your authorization, we're requesting to be able to procure this bus through the Byboard Contract. Notice that it does include a fee on there, and I don't know if you've ever noticed those before when we use Byboard. There's actually a rebate that comes to us from this particular cooperative, and the fee is for anybody that uses the Byboard Contract. It is what pays the administrative costs of having such a large nationwide contract, which is especially useful with the prices we get for certain types of items that come into our purview.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11, rescind the court order of February 3, 2020, item number nine, on the regular agenda of award of bid 20-001 Lubricant Oil Grease and Antifreeze and Cleaners for the County of El Paso to Brewer Oil Company of El Paso, Texas, and CNR Distributing LLC of El Paso, Texas, awarded per line item. Purchasing approved on January 28, 2020. Funding is available from various departmental correction department accounts. Further, award bid 20-001 Lubricant Oil Grease and Antifreeze and Cleaners for the County of El Paso to Brewer Oil Company of El Paso, Texas, as primary vendor, and CNR Distributing LLC of El Paso, Texas, as secondary backup vendor. Purchasing approved on January 28, 2020. Funding is available from various department accounts.
Deborah Correjo Troll, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, you're allowing me to correct a mistake that was made in the presentation of this item last week. You have already approved this, and nothing about the contract or the bid tabulation is changing. I do need to state for the record that when you awarded it, so we're asking you to rescind the last award, we made the statement that it was going to be awarded per line item. The bid was not let out that way. We're asking you to re-award today correctly where we have a primary and a secondary, and I apologize for the confusion from last week, but thank you for allowing me to re-present this the correct way.
Oh, so.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, approve and authorize a purchasing agent to solicit proposals for an events and feasibility study for existing county Coliseum and new amphitheater in accordance with Local Government Code 262.030. The purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
Judge Commissioners, Commissioner Perez asked that we postpone this item for one week and make sure that the court has seen the final specs that we're planning on using for this. So, if the court would so entertain that, we'd ask that you postpone the item, and we will be sure to send what specs we have to you all today.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yes, sir. I apologize, yes.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Economic Development. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the county hotel occupancy tax policy. Opinion number 19-1155.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Andrea Hutchins with Economic Development Department. So, today we are here to discuss the establishment of a hotel occupancy policy or hotel occupancy tax policy, and the administration that would come from this policy. So, if you remember back in August when we had originally met and discussed this policy with you all, we received some feedback from the court that you all wanted to see some additions, namely, kind of an addition of a tiers system, and then also the addition of a little bit more flexible language so that we could bring larger scale venues and items to the court for consideration, and then smaller items could be sent to administration for approval. So, this is really just a review of those things. So, the hotel occupancy tax, as you know, is given to us by the authority of the state of Texas based on the fact that we are a special county, so we are one of a couple of special counties, but that does make us a little bit limited in how we can use the hotel occupancy tax. We are limited to five categories, whereas a municipality would be limited to seven. I do want to point out that as a part of the five categories, one of the things that we are specifically limited to is 15% of our annual hotel occupancy tax being allocated toward the promotion of arts. And currently, our office is tracking what we have used in the past. We are at less than 1% of our overall budget. So, you'll find that that item is not included in the overall policy, basically just to cut down on legal jargon, but we are aware and we are tracking those things. In addition, we are able to use the hotel occupancy tax for establishment improvement and maintenance of convention centers, for administrative costs, for advertising and marketing, and then obviously for historical renovations. The addition of the tiered system that I had previously mentioned would include four different tiers. The first would include basically our obligations of maintaining and operating the properties and the historical assets that we own, so things like the Coliseum, the Los Portales Museum, and the jail, things like that. And then for cultural tourism, that would be, you know, events of 5,000 and up, that would be something like the Rio Grande Festival that you all had just approved. And then for things that would be smaller than that, you know, we would be looking at, say, you know, smaller little festivals and things like that that individual organizations had come to us with. And then larger scale cultural tourism events, a few of you, you know, are aware of some of the things that our office is working on, but as an example would be a multi-day music festival at Ascarate Park, let's say, or potentially a desert food festival, or something to that, to that effect.
Go back one? Yep. The one thing about that that you mentioned, but tier four is just for events that happen at county-owned facilities, and that came from a conversation where the court specifically asked that we consider adding that. And so, we brought that back. That's, that's one of the main, because you all have taken action before, just in other budget sessions on like tier two, and even just now you took action on something that qualifies under tier three. So, you've asked that tier four, that's the major change to what our practice has been.
And have we described what a large-scale event is?
So, you have not discussed what a large-scale event is previously. You've just said events that would happen at our venue, but Andrea can go into more details about what that would be.
So, part of the policy that, at least the feedback that we received from you back in August, was that you wanted some of these to be a little bit more flexible. So, I think when you're looking at a large-scale event, when you're considering, you know, number of room nights and number of attendees and things like that, if we start getting really into the particulars, it could be a little bit limiting as far as how the court could use those things, but because the court has to be the one to approve a tier four item, I think if we left it somewhat flexible, that that would probably be meeting more of the intent as far as the feedback that we had received from you all in the past. So, I'll use as another example, you know, we've talked about doing a desert food festival, which I'm going to bring a larger presentation to the court to consider that, but, you know, we're going to be building that out. That'll be a county-run event, and, you know, if, if we start saying that, you know, we can only utilize hot funds for very specific, you know, numbers of room nights and things like that, it definitely does start impeding your flexibility. But again, I just want to point out that the court has to approve anything that would be considered tier four.
Okay.
So, again, the policy does do a couple of other things. It creates an application process and very specific criteria evaluation requirements, and we also require that anybody who is requesting funding from outside be able to show us what their commitment is from a hotel or to a hotel, what their, I guess, supposed room number of nights would be, like they'd have to have had made a reservation for a block of room nights, and then obviously, we do give preference to the use of local vendors. But most of this language was already in the policy, we just did some things to kind of strengthen. So, we are asking that the court approve and adopt the increased additions to the hotel occupancy tax policy.
Approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leon?
Thank you.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge Commissioners, I just want to commend Andrea and Valerie for their work on this. This has been like a long time coming. We've probably done, you would not believe how many versions of a simple policy we've gone through, and I'm just really thankful that they've been able to see it through to the finish and get it to us so quickly after.
Thank you.
This time.
And now, we can promote and show off our event fund, and you'll see a lot more tourism-related programs coming through that we're able to promote it now.
We thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Item number 16, Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the establishment of a budget in an amount not to exceed $300,000 from GFG Admin Operation Contingencies under the Community Services Department for the establishment of various salary, fringe, and operating accounts in the Digital Library Division for a digital librarian position, P16, as approved by the Commissioners Court for FY 2020. Funding is available in General Funds G Admin Operation Contingencies.
Hi, good afternoon, County Judge Commissioners. Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. During your fiscal 2020 budget discussions, you prioritized establishing a county library system in support of your community goal of advancing community support services. During that process and as part of that process, a lot of research was conducted. You tasked myself, Joel, and Brian Stanley from the Domestic Relations Office to look at ways to establish a library system in the county moving forward. And so, part of that process, we researched other communities and the cost effectiveness of building a brick-and-mortar public library system versus perhaps a more contemporary digital library system in the county. We found that Bear County in Texas was the first in the nation to develop an exclusive digital library system in their county. The city of San Antonio has an established public library system with brick-and-mortar branches, but Bear County was, was in sort of the same boat as we are, where they didn't have a public library in the county area. Their fringe county is much smaller than ours, however, they were having some funding issues as well. And just to put it in perspective, Bear County established their digital library system in 2013. The year before, the City of McAllen built a brick-and-mortar library, and they spent $24 million to refurbish an existing building with bookshelves, and as you can imagine, your traditional digital library here in the city of El Paso with bookshelves and books. And so, 24 million versus what Bear County spent 2.4 million to establish a digital library concept. They were the first in the country. The City of Laredo followed, and they built a much smaller version of a digital exclusive library. In Laredo, they used, actually, the City of Laredo's Public Housing Authority, used an existing community room and converted it to a digital library branch. And so, we kind of want to follow in those footsteps. We'd be the third in Texas to establish a digital library system. You allocated $300,000 to do a startup version of it. We did a bunch of research. We obviously tapped into the City of Laredo, Bear County, who were extremely helpful in giving us information about how to go about it, put us in contact with some of the vendors they used. We contacted purchasing, we received demonstrations from those vendors with purchasing's guidance and moderation. So, we're here today to ask you to establish that budget where we allocate salaries and operation to get that done. We worked with HR throughout the first months of this quarter to develop a job description for a digital librarian. They exist, there are not very many in the country, but they do exist, and it is a specific, very special job description because it's exclusive. It's not your traditional librarian that, they still manage a book collection, but they have to have the information technology experience and skill to handle a digital library system. So, just to kind of give you a vision of what it may look like, there's still a branch, but instead of walking into a digital library, or a public library rather, and seeing bookshelves, you see sort of a technology lab, and you'll see desktops. People will have access to a desktop to read eBooks on their, in the branch, or check out mobile tablets where they can view eBooks at home, or if they have their own access to their tablet or computer at home and internet service, they can do that with a digital library card. So, it still follows the traditional method of a traditional library, but it's all in electronic format. And so, we've designated, we have existing technology infrastructure in one of our community resource centers in Aguadulce, in the Colonia of Aguadulce. We already have infrastructure there where we may establish a digital library system, and so, we're looking at that facility to be our startup branch, and hopefully in the future, we can expand that to other regional areas across the county, perhaps in the northwest part of the county, further down in the east, to be able to have a digital library system accessible to all county residents. But part of the process is to establish that line item budget that you allocated throughout your fiscal year 2020 process, and our first step is to have that established so that we can go and recruit for a librarian to help us start up this library system and give us recommendations as to the unique collection that we may need in this community.
Irene, have you looked at, the County Housing Authority seems to be like a natural partner. Have you had any discussions with Miguel?
Well, we have not until we saw that the City of Laredo had done that, so that would be a unique partnership for us, and because they're strategically located in Fabens, I think that that would be kind of our phase two for another branch, and so, it doesn't take a lot of space. This is where we're, we're using existing facilities to do that, and so, Bear County used one of their public service annexed buildings. They had a 4,000-square-foot vacant office where they converted it into a digital library branch, and then they branched out to other annexes, and so, I see that the Public Housing Authority would be a great option.
They'd be very open, they've got a lot of that type of activities, I think that, and we've been wanting to find ways to support them and.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Have that conversation with Miguel.
Most definitely, most definitely.
So, I do want to clarify, you all did establish a budget. We knew it would not be a budget for a full year because it would not start at the beginning of the year, but this budget was established, it just was set in contingencies. So, what we're asking you to do today is to authorize it, one, creating the position, and then, two, setting up the line item budget.
I'd like to, I'll move to approve, but I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you're doing on this. I know this is something that we've talked about for many years. I think my first year in office, I heavily advocated during strategic planning for a library system countywide, and I know Commissioner Perez has always been adamant about the need for something like this as well, and, you know, this is one of those important programs that I think, you know, that we're moving to fruition, and it's going to, it's going to have a great impact in, I mean, countywide, not, I mean, not just in the unincorporated areas, but, but for anybody who wants access to a digital library. You know, it's really a great program, and so, I just wanted to thank you for keeping the ball moving, and, you know, sometimes these things take a while. We have to talk about them for, for periods of time, but, you know, I'm glad to see that something that, that we started working on a long time ago is starting to come to fruition. something that we started working on a long time ago is starting to come to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Was that a motion? That was a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you. Thank you, Irene.
Item number seventeen, Information Technology. Approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the agreement between the County of El Paso and Sequel Data Systems. Funding in the amount of $374,030 is available in CIP 20 ITD IT equipment. Contract number 20200035.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Chris Stathis, your chief, good afternoon. I guess I've been here a little while, huh? Sorry. Chris Stathis, your Chief Information Officer. The item before you would allow for the procurement of an innovative solution to a challenge that we faced related to the storage of digital media. Our requirements that our users have placed upon us in storing very large digital files, these are video files, audio files, photographs, have created an increasing demand and load on our normal storage needs. I challenged our team to come up with an effective and efficient solution to this. They came through with flying colors. This is a very creative solution to our problem. It enhances our security. It enhances our ability to do disaster recovery and business continuity. I'm here to ask you for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have related to it.
Motion to approve. I don't know enough to ask you anything.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen, Approve and authorize the County Judge to sign the agreement between the County of El Paso and SHI Government Solutions. Funding in the amount of $214,098 is available in CIP 20 ITD IT equipment. Contract number 20200036.
Chris Stathis, Chief Information Officer. This is also storage that we're asking for approval for. This is a little more mundane, though. This purchase will just simply allow us to continue current operations and allow for the expansion of just regular increased needs for service. I think we just heard one related to digital libraries and those kind of items. So, we encourage approval on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, Public Works with a Correction from the Parks and Recreation Department. Approve and authorize the waiver of parks and special events and pavilion fees for moms on board to fundraise at county-sponsored events through December 31, 2020, in order to raise funds that will be directly applied to the grant match for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department grant for the all-inclusive playgrounds.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So, this is in an effort for the County of El Paso to support moms on board in their fundraising efforts to raise the $750,000 to meet the grant match for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department all-inclusive playgrounds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do. You do a lot.
Thank you all for your continued support. Can't do without you all and the amazing leadership that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, Grant Applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize the Community Services Department, General Assistance Division, to apply for the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Phase Thirty-Seven in the amount of $100,000 to provide a range of services, including emergency shelter, transitional shelter, food pantries, and rental and mortgage assistance from October 1, 2020 to January 31, 2021. Further, authorize the County Judge to sign the grant application. No county match is required. Contract number 20200126.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Carlos Maricas, Operations Manager with Community Services Department, General Assistance Division. This is an annual grant application that we submit. Also wanted to mention that the safety net services mentioned in the item are all eligible services, but we focus on the homeless prevention, and so, it's through rent assistance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number twenty-three, Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to apply for the FY 2021 two-year Texas Department of Transportation intercity bus grant in the amount of $1,52,871 to continue the provision of the intercity bus service for El Paso, correction, for El Paso, Anthony, Texas, and Las Cruces, New Mexico, known as the Gold Route. Further, authorize the County Judge to sign the certificate of obligation. Grant match will be provided by the New Mexico Department of Transportation in the amount of $1,515,107. Contract number 20200067.
Good afternoon, County Judge Commissioner Sal Lontz, Transportation Engineer for Planning and Development. Before we get started, I do want to introduce to your right, to my right, Ms. Reyna Mayorga. She's about to present her first items on Commissioners Court, so I would ask you to make it easier.
To rehaze her?
No more than 50 questions, please. So, I want to introduce you to her.
Is it legal to rehazing employees?
No.
In addition to that, after the both items, we do have our fall promotion, our winter promotions that we'd like to also pass out to the Commissioners Court. We're passing these out to all of our passengers in all of our routes. So, as a token, we want to hand these out after the both items.
Thank you. Thank you, Sal.
Well, Sal, you're going to wait till we vote, huh?
Yes. Good afternoon, Reyna Transit Planner, Reyna Mayorga Transit Planner, Public Planning and Development Department. The intercity bus grant is a grant that we've actually applied for and been awarded in the past, so as a renewal, in a sense. And this, if awarded, this funding is for two years to continue our intercity bus route, also known as the Gold Route, going from downtown El Paso to Las Cruces, New Mexico, which is an integral part of our regional public transit service. It's partnership between Techstat New Mexico and El Paso County. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Are animals allowed? No, I'm just kidding.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great job.
Item number twenty-four, Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to apply for the FY 2021 two-year Texas Department of Transportation Rural Discretionary Grant in the amount of $2,622,016 with a required county match of $524,403. In addition, authorize the County Judge to sign the certificate of obligation as a requirement of the grant. If awarded, the county match will be appropriated in the FY 21 budget. Contract number 20200096.
Reyna Mayorga Transit Planner, Planning and Development. This grant is, we're asking for funding to construct bus shelters along our rural commuter bus routes. We currently don't have any passenger shelters, so this would give a place for our riders to wait, and especially during inclement weather. It's something that we don't have, so you can imagine standing outside in El Paso summer heat, all the way out in Torneo or Favens, waiting on a bus that, you know, is going to take a while to get there. It also provides and improves safety for passenger pickup and drop-off. Staff recommends approval.
Question.
Commissioner Robinson.
These are new shelters?
Yes, we have none along our rural commuter bus routes.
During the time with the upgrade of the bus system with Sun Metro, there were a lot of shelters that were taken out from certain locations, and the new shelters were put in.
Correct.
Have we checked with the city in regard to those shelters that they're not going to use or not using, and that we maybe to give them to us?
Yes, Commissioner, we have been in contact with Sun Metro for that reason. We were aware that they have some of these shelters still located, I think, in their Montana, no, Montana, the Montana Center. We're hoping to see if we could use some of those, because there are some locations, based on our study, on the location of these shelters, they fall within the transfer stations, and that would be a good location to place these shelters, kind of to mimic what Sun Metro has within their facility.
But this grant won't fund all shelters. This grant is not enough to fund every shelter need in the community. So, we're asking for also the ability to do the grant.
I'm saying that, just look into that aspect, if there are shelters that the city have, because what they're doing, they're putting in new shelters with the illuminated lights and all that good stuff.
Yes, sir.
But there are shelters, not just by, at the terminals, throughout the city that, like, I was at somewhere, one of our locations where they had some shelters laying in a lot somewhere. I can't remember where I saw them. I'll retrace my movement and go and find them and lay claim on them.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, check with Sun Metro.
Yes, we'll do. And in addition to Ms. Mayorga's presentation, if you recall, maybe about two years ago already, I had come before you to ask for similar grant approval. We had secured the funding for some shelters. However, at that time, if you recall, Techstat wasn't, had preferred for us to have some sort of planning document on justifying the amount of bus shelters. So, since then, they did award us a grant to do this study that we just finished wrapping up at the end of this month. So, this is based on the shelter needs in the region. So, this grant opportunity comes every two years. So, timing-wise, we timed it perfectly. So, as the report finished, we're applying now to construct and build some bus shelters and benches alongside with this planning document to support the, just for the need of the shelters and benches.
Excellent. Thank you.
Judge Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. We do have some capital dollars planned for future bus shelters, which could be used to leverage as match for these grant funds. However, it's about $190,000 shy. So, to the extent that we did get this grant award successful, we would have to plan on programming for FY 21, about an additional $190,000 in grant matches.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Item number twenty-five, Budget and Finance. Approve and authorize the reallocation of capital funds.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This is part of our routine quarterly CIP updates, so the projects that are being recommended to sweep to unallocated funds are for, are left over from projects that you've previously approved that have been completed, would ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-six, Approve Amendment Number Seventeen to the County of El Paso's 2019 through 2020 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will not increase or decrease the County of El Paso's 2019 through 2020 overall operating budget of $474,616,425.59.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. You received the backup for this week's budget amendment with your weekly highlights. Would ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This now brings us to item number twenty-seven, Executive Session. Commissioners Court will recess into Executive Session to discuss items 27A through 27C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will recess to, will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners Corr will recess to ta, or will reconvene to take official action.[284.94]
All county offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th in observance of the President's Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. The El Paso County Law Library would like to invite you to your wedding at the window on Friday, February 14th, 2020. Say I do at the Law Library. Group weddings performed 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. The fee is $50. The Law Library will provide the officiant, professional photographer, a 4x6 frame, a delicious wedding cupcake for the bride and groom, and the wedding march to begin the ceremony. Couples must meet the state of Texas marriage requirements as stated in the county clerk's website. Contact the Law Library to indicate your interest at eplawlibrary@epcounty.com or dial (915) 546-2245.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecoveryhtm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at (915) 546-2119 or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number (915) 546-2048.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Judge, we have an item from the consent agenda that we would need to have reconsidered. Item 4F, approve and authorize the modification renovation of space on the eighth floor of the courthouse for additional work and storage space for County Court at Law Number 5 in the amount of $759.26. Funding is available in GFCC 5 office expense. Further approve the transfer in the amount of $760 from GFCC 5 office expense to GFCC 5 maintenance repair buildings. Can we have a motion to reconsider this item?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioners Wally, Hargrave, the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. We received a late request from the department that after they reviewed this requested transfer, it would have depleted their operating expense to a level that would not allow them to get through the end of the fiscal year. So they've asked to flip those accounts and take the transfer out of their ops equipment account to accommodate this renovation.
And isn't ops equipment normally locked down?
Yes, so that would require an exception.
The item should read, "Approve and authorize the modification renovation of space on the eighth floor of the courthouse for additional work and storage space for County Court at Law Number 5 in the amount of $759.26. Funding is available in General Fund CC5 Ops Equipment. Further approve the transfer in the amount of $760 from General Fund CC5 Ops Equipment to General Fund CC5 Maintenance Repair Buildings."
And the reason that account is locked down, typically we have enough funding in those departmental budgets across the county to allow them to do office equipment replacement over a span of about eight to nine years. So they would have to probably modify their future operating equipment request to accommodate this.
Wally, is the office equipment the same as office expense?
No, sir. Office equipment is for small operating equipment that's valued at less than $5,000. Tables, chairs, fax machines, things of that nature.
And the court's been very particular. I mean, we started giving these allocations for departments to do that and we didn't want them using it for other purposes. I didn't know this last-minute change was going to come up. I don't know how critical the office revision modification is to warrant an exception to our policy.
Well, if we'd like, then I would propose that we table it to the next agenda. Let me get some background on it and the impact it might have on future equipment replacement.
Move to postpone for two weeks.
Did we have a vote already?
Reconsider.
Oh, motion reconsider? Okay, great.
We had a motion to reconsider that passed and then...
And then we're talking about it now. So motion to postpone.
To postpone for two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge. This completes today's meeting at 2:01 p.m.